This time I'd ask you, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just kind of notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public might participate and a roll call vote will follow. First item is the approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number two. This is kind of the, one of the fun deals about this, this job and this position is honoring people and recognizing people. And I'd like to have Deanna Dogman kind of join me up here. You know, it's not many times during, during a career of somebody that you can thank them twice. You know, they thank you when you're retired from the emergency management and now it's time to say thank you again for your 14 years you spent in the Board of Health. You've been, she's been a very important, integral part of the county business through the course of the years and you're, you're one of those cookies that's hard to replace in the bag. So, we, we want to thank you for everything you've done. Now, now you're retiring or getting off another board, what are you going to do?
Oh, I don't, I haven't really decided.
Well then, why don't you stay on another, why don't you stay on another term? And, but she's, she's been the chairman of our Board of Health and she's done outstanding job in your leadership and again, thank you.
Would just thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve Marshall County.
You come back again, we maybe put you on another board.
Oh, great.
Give her a round of applause, thank you. I don't know how many times you can tell somebody thanks or everything like, they just keep coming, you just kind of bobber. You just keep coming back, you just keep coming back. But thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from regular session of December 1, 2015. We're going to accept the 2015 week commissioner's report. Item number five, the file clerk of courts report from 11/15 with general supplemental 10% surcharge with a total of $696.08 and approved the claims as audited and authorized the county auditor and required issue payment of same. The listings of claims paid at this meeting, it will be included with all claims paid for the month of December. The December list of claims will be a part of the first meeting in January. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed above.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to some personnel actions. Item number seven is a change rate of pay for Bowen Fleming. Buildings and grounds department, change rate of from 1325 to 1475 effective December 15, 2015. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the change rate of pay for Bowen Fleming, Buildings and Grounds Department, change rate of pay from 1325 to 1475 effective December 15, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just a couple of comments. Bowen currently works for us in Buildings and Grounds. This is him coming off of his probationary period and this has matched the increases for the last individuals that have also come off of, off of their probationary period.
And I think too, we should note that, that this department is two, two people less than what we had.
Five years ago.
Five years ago and this is kind of falling into our, our, our plan that we've got again to put the right, different people in the right positions and this just kind of is all working.
It's worked out nicely.
Puzzles all working together. All right, we got a motion, a second, followed by discussion, anything else? Roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item B under approved personnel actions. Rehire of Eric Devick, secondary road department, temporary part-time as needed at $20 per hour. This will be effective December 15, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve this personnel action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just to comment that this is an annual thing, that we hire individuals for our secondary road department on a part-time basis. Helps us get through the winter without everybody going into overtime situations.
And, and again, we've got, we expect, I talked, just talked to Paul before we come to the meeting. He expects to haul, or hire two to three more. But we won't start two or three till after January. These, these temporary rehires are on a four-month period. They can work a maximum of four months before they become deemed a regular employee. And, and this also gives us the opportunity, if needed, we can call them in and they, they're actually doing the plowing and the, and the job, today they're out doing flood repair.
Yep.
But it, it, it seems to work out very well.
And ideally, our secondary roads, we like to have between five and six individuals on a part-time basis to help us get us through the winter.
And even, again, even though, just to kind of elaborate, even though we don't, we've got them on, on the working schedule, they are only there, if they, if they can't work, they, another, the next guy's called. It's just a pool of people to, to look at.
Yep, and it's as needed.
I'd like to say clarification, you had mentioned $20, it's $20.09.
Excuse me.
Just to get that nice.
Thank you very much, honored recorder. All right, we got a motion and a second, followed by discussion. Roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And the second rehire is for Brent McClintock, secondary road department, temporary part-time as needed at $20.09 an hour, effective December 15, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd approve that personnel action.
Got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number eight, Miles Capital presentation on investment management services. Jared's getting in place for the, for the microphone and.
Good morning, gentlemen. I invited Dan from Miles Capital to, to come and give a presentation. Part of the duties of the treasurer is, is investing the funds for the county. And going back to when I was first elected, we were getting 2.1%, on CDs here. And matter of fact, as, as far back as 2008, we were getting 5.5% on CDs and, and gradually we've seen the decline and we're down to CD rates right now, which is actually still competitive compared to a lot of treasurers I've talked to, is .55 is what we're getting here. And the past year, year and a half, I've been doing some research and looking to see, you know, are these rates going to go up? If they, if they go up soon, you know, we can continue with our plan that we're doing here in Marshall County. But you know, in the foreseeable future, rates are looking like they're low. When you have the 37-year employment workforce or workers in the workforce at 37-year low, it's looking like things won't be changing and if the feds do increase anything, I've talked to some bankers, they said, we've already built in whatever that increase is going to be. So, I don't anticipate any increases in the near future. So, it's time to look at, at maybe change some things how we do here in Marshall County to improve our rates. Number one thing is we got to keep the money safe, but, but we want to maximize our, our rates as well. And, and Dan's going to talk to you today about this plan with, with the separately managed accounts, what they can do for us to, to possibly increase our rates. So, I'm going to let Dan, he's going to take the seat over there to present to you guys and he's got some stuff for you. So, thanks for taking the time to listen and, and we're looking to, looking to do things better for Marshall County here in our investments. So, thanks, Dan.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Zomerman.
Well, I don't, I don't mess that up.
You know, it's, it's so long, oh, and you say it quick and then, you know, it goes.
Worse than Ravenbauer, isn't it? Because you look at it real quick and it looks like Zimmerman.
Yeah, I've, I've been called that many times, so. Here's a thanks for having me. As, as you talked about, we're talking about trying to enhance the yield on, on the investments that you do have. And just to give you a little bit of background, you think, okay, Miles Capital, who are you, where are you coming from? If you turn to the first page, it gives a little bit about Miles Capital. We're probably best known for, we're the manager of IPATE. I don't know if you're familiar with IPATE, Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, which you're a part of. We've been part of that since it started. We've been the investment manager, the marketer, and the administrator for that program since the 80s. And that's part of my job, that's, that's the other hat I wear, is I, I market for IPATE across the state and I, I market that program as well. But what we found is while doing that, there was a need out there, similar to what we're facing today. There's a lot of public entities that, you know, just aren't, you know, there's a lot of folks that aren't investment experts across Iowa and they don't have the time to be or, or want to be. They've got other jobs, like for instance, you know, Jared's got plenty of, on his plate besides, you know, knowing which investments are good investments, so on and so forth. So, the need that we saw is the fact that, you know, a lot of, a lot of investment professionals who are in spots like Jared are, are looking and saying, you know, I'm not sure what's out there. You know, I kind of have done things the way I've always been doing them. And we said, you know, there's, we can, we can help out in that scenario and the fact that we've got the expertise as far as managing public funds. Again, we've been doing this since, since the 80s, knowing what can and can't be done for, for public entities and, and taking that expertise and, and going forward into a separately managed account. But just to give you a little bit more overview of who we are, again, our firm itself was founded in 82. We manage over $4 billion in assets. You know, being in Des Moines, an Iowa-based firm, you know, we've got a lot of insurance clientele. You can see that's 72% of what we do. But local government funds is the next biggest, that's our, another specialty that we have. And that's, again, why I'm here talking to you about government fund investing. We've got professionals that have 15 years, been over, average over 15 years of experience and those folks that, that stick, stay with us, or excuse me, that we get, stick with us. So, we've got a very good history as far as an asset manager in insurance and public funds. And again, we've been doing this for a while and we're Iowa-based, we're known. So, that, that's, those are all good things that we can talk to Iowa entities about. Again, what we saw was, if you turned on page three, what we saw is the fact that there, there was a need out there. And, and what we like to do is we might like to maximize every dollar that's out there. So, that's, what this graph is just a simple illustration, just showing what the difference on, on $10 million invested, what .45% difference does over time. You know, most people look at that and say, it still kind of looks pretty close to zero. You know, there's, there's not a lot of, there's, you know, how can anybody get excited about something like that? And that's the kind of thing that we like to point out the difference, just showing if you, if you invested it at .45% higher, what the difference would accumulate to over two years, five years, 10 years. As you can see on the graph there, there's, you know, well over $450,000 difference in 10 years. So, that's, that's the reason why we're, again, why we're excited to offer this separately managed account and show that how we can, how you can outsource to the experts and, and get a little more yield. Page four is a hypothetical example for the county. As Jared said, right now, you're averaging .55 on your CDs. And on $6 million, and I think there's solid waste as part of that, as well as a general fund here, to make up that $6 million is roughly $33,000 today. If we did a separately managed account of a one-to-five-year portfolio, meaning, these are truly your reserves, meaning you don't have any plans for them today necessarily, but that's the type of thing that we would talk about. Okay, what are your plans going forward, just to make sure that liquidity is there when needed. But it, just going out a little bit further in, in accessing all the sources of investments, including, you know, any kind of government bond, whether it be a government agency or US Treasury or CDs. We want to work with local banks. You know, I'm in a, I'm a, an Iowa kid and, and I know what, what being local means and knowing that you have to include local banks as, as part of this equation and we don't want to exclude them at all. So, so really, we're, we're kind of the entity that would, would be in charge of managing those funds, finding the best investments, whether it's locally or we go to the government bond market. And you can see by, in today's market, what we'd be able to do. 1.3 is a, is an estimated net return on a portfolio like that. Just to give you a little more information on what separately managed account is, again, it's professional asset management. Again, you're outsourcing to the experts, you've got a team that's looking out for you and, and hopefully you get better pricing. So, you know, as I mentioned, we manage over $4 billion. So, you know, we've got a lot of brokers competing to, to get our business and will get us, you know, true market prices versus, you know, if various public officials said, okay, I want to go buy 100,000 of this or 50,000 of that, you know, you might not get pure market pricing in that case, just because there's not enough spread for the broker in there. So, that's, that's the advantage of going with someone who manages a lot of money. The, we have discretionary decision-making, so, you know, people like Jared don't have to deal with brokers giving them a call and say, hey, how about this investment, how about that investment? We can do that for you. Again, we involve local banks and, you know, we lessen Jared's administrative burden on, on making sure the investments are working as hard as they can. We customize the portfolio, like I said, we, we look at what are your cash flow needs? You know, if, if you didn't have anything going on, we'd probably do a simple ladder type scenario of, you know, one to five years, you have something coming to you every year, so you diversify your risk. You know, you, a lot of people said, you know, we're, we kept our, our investments short because we were thinking rates were going to go up and, and they said that five years ago. Where if you, it take a prudent, disciplined approach of just, hey, let's have a little bit in every timeframe. That way, we always know we're going to, we're probably not going to hit it big on, on some, but we're, we're just going to be always diversifying our, our interest rates as far as where they are, where they're at in the market, no matter where interest rates move. And then, yeah, of course, focus on yield generation. And one thing I do want to say is we're not, we, we don't look to trade, if you will. It's a buy and hold strategy in, in the fact that we just want to go out and get you the best investments possible. And of course, we do it according to the code and make sure that, and that's where our expertise and experience in that area can help out as well. So, we want to make sure that that's adhered to. The last thing we want anybody to have is their name in the paper for an investment they weren't supposed to get into. Because, you know, I travel the state and I hear all kinds of stories about, yeah, you had this fireman's fund and we were going to put it in a mutual fund and, you know, all this kind of, where, you know, again, we know what you can and can't do and are very adept at making the right decisions in that scenario. Page six is just why utilize us and I've been kind of talking about a lot of these points already, but of course, we're the, we are the largest SEC-registered independent asset manager in Iowa. We've got a dedicated team, we work in the investment industry and we also, as well as have a presence here in Iowa. And we're, while we're a, a company that manages a lot of money, we're a smaller firm that's very agile. We can, we can adjust as needed. So, we're not some bureaucratic big company that you call and you get a phone tree. It's very nimble organization that's able to meet, meet your needs. So, that's just a brief summary on, on why, you know, what we're trying to do, who we are. In front of you, I put a few pieces of paper, which is a simple resolution that you can look over. You can, you know, look it over now, act on it later, act on it today if you want to, that's totally up to you. Basically, what it does is it just allows the treasurer to engage in whatever documentation we would need to get done in order to, to move this forward. You would, this would allow the treasurer to do that. So, again, we try to keep things pretty simple and move forward that way. So, any questions?
Your fees, are they based on, on a size of a portfolio or are they just a flat fee?
Yes, that's a good question. The fees are today, seven basis points, .07. And I will say, and I think it, gosh, I don't know if I have it in this graph or not, I probably didn't, so I apologize. Normal fee, you know, in the, in the world we've been living in for the last how many years of lower interest rates, everybody, like for instance, the IPATE organization and everything, we've been, we've been lowering or discounting our fees. So, today's rate environment, we've been, this is a, would be a discounted fee as well, just because rates are the way they are. Our typical fee is .15, 15 basis points, okay? And with today's rate environment, we're charging .07 to all of our clients. And then the only other, the only other fee that would be associated with that is trustee or custodian. Because we don't actually hold the assets ourselves, which is good for you as far as a safekeeping, where we've, we've got to deal with US Bank. Now, you can use whoever you want, but they've just provided the best deal as far as rate is concerned that we've been able to find and that would be on this size portfolio, .03. So, in today's market, the most fees you would pay is .1% on all the assets under management, so.
And when you're going .1, you're going 0.1. Or you're going 1.0?
0.1, yes. Had to think there for a second, just to make sure.
Move your points around.
Yes, so it's 10 basis, yeah, not 1%, .1% correct.
Now, okay, and, and going off of what Supervisor Thompson was saying, then we go back to page four, where you went with a 1.30 of, for our investment for $78,000. You would, you would take 0.1 of $78,000?
Yes, so in, in essence, if, let's say if, if we got a, all your investments together yielded 1.3%, you would get net 1.2.
I see, okay.
Yep.
As, as a county governmental entity, don't we have to have some guarantee that we're not just betting on, gambling on, investing on, like, the open market? I mean, are we supposed to be, are we supposed to be?
Right, yeah.
That we really don't do that?
There, there, what, what you, what you can't, there, there's, there's two things. There, there's, one is what you're allowed to, to get into. You are basically allowed to buy government treasuries, government agencies, CDs that are collateralized or there's some other short-term type instruments. But those are the primary investments that we would, would get you into, okay? I mean, commercial papers, possibility, we'd have to look into your investment policy. But that's, we would adhere to your investment policy to make sure that we're truly just buying whatever you are allowed to buy. The other thing to, to be aware of is timeframe. You know, if these are considered operating funds, you have, you can invest those up to 397 days. So, they can't mature beyond 397. Where if they truly are reserve funds, typical investment policies, and the Code of Iowa follows this as well, that you can go beyond that. There's no time limit on any type of reserves that you don't need for any of this year's operating expenses. So, so to answer your question, you know, yeah, we, we can't get into a, a stock or a mutual fund that consists of any of those outside investments. And as I mentioned before, the, what we would not do is do trading. So, if we, if interest rates had a big move and we buy and sell, you know, we're, we're not really, we're not into that game. I mean, if, if there was a strange circumstance, we'd definitely, you know, be in communication, but that's not our, our goal. So, if that, hopefully that answers your question.
What guarantee do we have that, I mean, I, I think CDs, what little I know of it, you're, you're pretty well locked into a CD. What guarantee, do we have the same type guarantee with this? Because it sounds, I feel that we're, we're gambling a little, I mean, and gambling on a higher rate? A better program?
To me, to me, what, what you're talking about, to me, is, is credit risk. Is there a chance to, you put your money in and, and lose your money because of a default of some sort? The, the only way you can lose your money on, on the investments we're talking about is if the government defaulted. Because we're talking about government agencies that are backed by the federal government, similar to FDIC insurance, which backs up a lot of the banks, you know.
If the government defaults, if we just had CDs, would we still lose the CDs?
That's, that's a good question.
Gee, I've asked so many good questions here, I don't know.
Well, you know, it, 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 there's.
Just ask me, ask me, would we lose our investment with a CD versus this?
There, yes, there'd be just as good a chance, yes. In, in my mind, the, the credit risk that you're talking about is the same. I mean, people like bank CDs because they're familiar with them, they know. You know, a government bond, or a government agency bond is all, you know, why are banks good? Because they're, they're backed up by FDIC insurance, which is a federal, which is of the federal government. The same way the government bonds are backed by the federal government. So, really, to me, it's the same, it's the same thing. There's really no more credit risk in this type of instrument.
FDIC is going to guarantee things to $250,000. If you are in a public entity and you, you put money into an institution, that is guaranteed through FDIC, but the remainder is based upon collateralization of the institution you put it in. They're literally pledging the assets of the financial institution towards your deposit. You know, currently, Marshall County has, you know, a lot of money in, in different institutions that are above the, the $250,000 FDIC insurance and those guarantees are by the collateral of the institutions that we have them in.
And a lot of the collateral is, can be government bonds.
It can be, yep.
Or just the equity of the bank.
But you know, it's, it's, it's all backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government and, and, you know. But right now, we're just printing money to cover it.
Right.
It's fiat currency.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I guess, I guess, again, we, we deal with taxes as our revenue for income. Now, now, and you stop me if I'm wrong, you stop me if I'm wrong, Dan. And now, we're looking to pay a company, as Miles would be, to manage our money. So, we're paying taxpayers' money out to manage the money we receive as revenue from taxpayer. And stop me if I'm wrong, I mean, I'm, I'm just.
Yep, that's, that's right on. And kind of like, you, you know, you, you pay and, just because I know Jared, you know, if you had a building to put up, you wouldn't ask Jared to put up the building because he doesn't have the expertise to do that, right? What, what, what you're doing is you're, yes, you are paying money, but hopefully you're getting a better return for that money, where.
For the key word being hopefully.
Well.
You know.
Yes, and, right, I mean, that's the goal. Otherwise, you know, if, if we can add any value, then it's no sense us doing it, is really what it comes down to. And, and by, again, outsourcing to the experts, kind of like my house example, I would not hire myself to, to build a house. I would hire that out because it would cost me too much to do that. Where, yes, you are paying for something, but you're, you're getting something in return, so.
Our interest income over probably the last seven years, just offhand, we're probably down $700,000 a year. And I, I may be a little conservative on that figure. I'm pretty close.
Yeah, I, I don't have the figure, but it's, it's.
It's, it's, it's.
When you're talking, when you're having rates of, you know, back in 2005, 2.1 in 2000, it's.
But you know, that, that's the nation. How'd you like to be retired trying to live off your CD incomes right now? It's just, it's just not happening. Personally, I would not be prepared at this time to enter into a, a motion on this without further discussion and thoughts.
I'm kind of the same way because I don't want to make the wrong decision on this. I mean, I, maybe we need to talk more about it.
Yeah, that's certainly fine, you know, I.
Because I appreciate, I know what you're saying, you know.
Are, are we in charge of the, the landfill fund?
Yes, I invest those, we got about 3.9 million, we're, we're presenting to the landfill tonight. And then, no rush on this, of course. I've been, I've been looking into this for, for over a year and, and just wanting to make the right decision on it as well. Because the number one thing is the safety of our money, that's the number one thing, Danny, I think you're right. But number two, when, when you're looking at what we're getting for yields, it's, I've been hoping as well that they go up. And, and an example I got from another county that's, that's doing a similar thing as us, that they're going through a broker and, and their own bank gave them a. their own bank gave them a rate of, uh, I don't, I don't remember the rates off the top of my head, but they got a CD rate almost double through their broker than through the secondary market themselves. Um, so there are the advantage of, of going, having these professionals at, at your disposal to help us out, um, because the bottom line, keep our money safe, number two, improve our yields, so, um, you know, we get that forty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's a salary here in Marshall County. Um, so, and, uh, we just need to make sure we're, we're doing the best we can to maximize what we have, and, and taking our time and doing it right. I have no problem, we can sit and, and discuss more of it, of, of what, what it would look like in, in other scenarios, I'd be happy to do so.
Yep, yeah.
See, I put myself in the situation, I, I got a, an investment broker that I use because I don't want to build my own house.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, I, I guess I, I just want to look into further, i- are, are counties allowed to do, to, to have an investment broker?
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I would, I'd feel like I'm quite the gambler if I'd be the one trying to be my own broker with, with government bonds to improve our rates. Um, so, me and myself doing it, I like sitting on the CDs because it's what I'm comfortable with, um, but if I do have the professionals that are bound by the Code of Iowa, which we are bound by in, in, uh, chapter twelve, um, it's, I'd rather have them helping me out to get our rates better than me trying to gamble, so, I'm not a gambler.
You know, I, I guess I would propose that we table this.
Sure.
For today, and bring it back after we visit.
After we meet with the, the landfill, and we'll, we'll discuss how that all goes, you'll, you'll be there, so.
Yeah, I'll be there tonight, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear more.
I'll, I'll be there.
I'd like to hear more of what the landfill board has to say.
All right, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to table item number eight on our Miles Capital presentation on our Investment Management Services, till a future date.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Very non-roll call, please.
Grabenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you, Dan, very, very much.
Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be in communication.
Sounds good.
All right, moving on to item number nine, Floating Holiday for twenty sixteen, discussion of possible action for, uh, for setting the floating holiday in twenty sixteen for Marshall County employees. I will open it up for comments. I got the official calendar. Very good. Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, uh, uh, set Friday, December twenty-third, two thousand sixteen as the date for the floating holiday in two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Grabenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. Okay, we're in. All right, moving on to item number ten, Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero zero four nine, this is a construction evaluation resolution. Basically, this is kind of a, a, a resolution that we, evaluation resolution that we submit to the Department of National Resources, the ENR, and adopt and recommendation approve or disapprove of construction, prevent application regarding a proposed confinement feeding operation structure. I would open it up for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero zero four nine, Construction Evaluation Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, uh, second that. All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? Well, this is something you've done every year, right?
Yes, we do this on an annual basis, when we, uh, when we agree that we are going to follow the, the master matrix with respect to confinement operations, this is something that, that kinda goes along with that. And, and we adopt this on an annual, an annual basis.
All right, and then we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Grabenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. All right, moving on, item number eleven, uh, Marshall Town Gateway Center Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Financing, TIF, indebtedness, certification to county auditor, discussion of possible approval of Consumer Energy has certified to the Marshall County Auditor that during the time period, December one, twenty fourteen, through December one, twenty fifteen, they have incurred outstanding loans, advances, indebtedness on, or bonds, none of which have been previously certified in the amounts of shown below at twenty-six thousand six forty-seven. Is there anything that you wanna?
This is something that, um, for TIF and stuff, they have to come to us and tell us what they are certifying to us, um, and then at that point, we put it through as something that's certification. We also do a, um, every year now, the, we have to do a breakdown, um, of these funds and different things, as showing as to where everything is going, so this will just be added to that every year, so.
This is a very good thing, and it started a couple of years ago, where the entities that are receiving funding from TIF have to actually certify where the funds are going and how they're spending them. Up until this time, the state legislature did not require them to certify where the, the debt was going, and this, this is an, a definite addition to the transparency.
All right, I'm going to entertain a motion on this. Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, moved to approve the, uh, Marsh Town Gateway Center Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Financing and Deadness Certification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Grabenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number twelve, Harvester Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Financing, uh, indebtedness, certification to county auditor, discussion of possible approval of the Harvester Development LC has certified the Marshall County Auditor that during the period, time period of December one, twenty fourteen, to December one, twenty fifteen, they have incurred outstanding loans, advances, indebtedness, or bonds, none of which have been previously certified in the amount of nothing. So, that's good, I guess.
So, well, they ha- so they haven't incurred any debt, um, but that also means that things maybe might not be moving out there as well, so.
No, no action, probably, okay. I'm going to entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Harvester Urban Renewal Tax Increment Financing and Deadness Certification of zero dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, when we originally started the Harvester TIF, there were six different portions to that, uh, TIF, I believe four of them have dropped off, there's two left, and they should be completely done in the next couple of years, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
So, we got, we got two more years of the Harvester TIF, and the county will be down to one TIF being the Gateway TIF.
All right, got a motion and a second, followed by discussion. Roll call, please.
Grabenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number thirteen, Animal Rescue League Contract, Shelley is here, Shelley Deal is here with us, Director of the Animal Rescue League, and presents a future contract, uh, looking at the contract, Marshall County, effective July one, twenty sixteen, and Shelley, we'll get you up, uh, to the microphone, and we appreciate you coming back, because we have, we've had you guys here one other time.
Yes, thank you. I also have with me, um, Board Member Bethany Curry.
You're okay.
Bye.
Nice to meet you, Bethany, thank you.
Did you get the copies of the budget that you had requested?
Yep, we received the profit and loss statement.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And, I, I don't know, Sheriff Comanches, do you want to sit up there and, we're, we kinda, we kinda wanted the sheriff to kinda put a plan together, or his thoughts on what, um, we can do with the contract. There was an increase, you know, I mean, uh, of the, uh, request out of this contract, and then that will, we will, uh, go in front of the, the, our budget hearings when we, when we do that. But, I don't know, Sheriff, do you, we want to comment on anything about procedures, uh, what we're doing, what, what we'd like to do?
Okay, currently, um, I believe at the last meeting, it was just decided that we're going to extend for now until we had an opportunity to both, uh, see what kind of numbers the Rescue League's operational, uh, budget consists of, and, and then based on that, the board was going to utilize that, and then, and the need, developing needs assessment as to, uh, what type of use we use, we have with you guys. Based on that, I think it's up to you, exactly what you want to do for budgeting numbers and that, it's, it's not out of my budget. But that's really where we're at at this point, I think this is still a, a fact-finding period, I.
Yeah.
You know, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. Currently, what, what runs through is, is, uh, Sheriff Comanches has agreements with several of the surrounding communities to do their patrol division within the incorporated areas, and inside of those incorporated areas, if there's an issue with a, with an, an animal, that responsibility falls upon, Ted may make that call, or, or his officers, and that burden falls upon the, the incorporated town. With the county, we are in charge of things that are outside of the incorporated areas, which would be the unincorporated towns of Green Mountain and, and Dillon and Corey, and, and things on that order, plus everything outside of the incorporated city limits of the towns. Currently, our contract with you is if there's an, a pickup on an animal, it's a thirty dollars after-hours charge, if it's pasture hours, and a fifteen dollar fee per, per usage, we do approximately five of those a year, at, at most. So, what we're, we're, we're currently looking at is, is what the, the sheriff uses through the, in, his, his, uh, patrolling of the other incorporated towns plus us, and one of the questions we would have is, uh, go, going down the road, what would you charge us if it was an à la carte fee, based on if we had a contract only for picking up when we needed it? So, if there was that four or five times a year that we call you, what would an à la carte fee be? Would it remain the same as thirty dollars after hour and a fifteen dollar per incident?
And you're saying in, in place of?
Well, we're, we're, like Sheriff Comanches said earlier, right now, we're in a fact-finding.
Right.
And going down the road. You know, part of the things that you've proposed with your current contract is, is less hours of availability.
Right.
For being dropped off, and an increase in price.
Right.
Of what you're requesting.
The increase in price is, um, due to just being an open-admission shelter for all Marshall County animals to come in, for like citizens to bring them in, we do not charge them, even though we have a cost to take care of them, um, we're, we're open admission, we do not refuse any animal, domesticated animal coming in from Marshall County. So, that's what that is, entailing just, you know, being available to, to intake those animals.
So, if somebody just drops, you, you, your, your reference, just somebody just drops one off?
Mm-hmm, right, we take care of it.
If I bring, if I bring my dog out, or cat.
Mm-hmm.
You would charge?
We charge a surrender fee, yes.
Okay. Well, what if, what if I'm better off just dropping it off?
Well, we do have people that just, you know, take advantage once in a while, but, but.
I guess, I guess I'm lost here, you drop, you drop it off, you're better off.
One, one of the big problems, as I, as I see with the proposal that was given to us a few months ago, is simply that, uh, my staff is not trained, is not equipped, is not ready to begin hauling dogs and cats around. Um, there's another situation where we do haul people, a number of people for, uh, non-criminal purposes, mental health, substance abuse, and those type of things in those same vehicles. So, a concern that I have is the fact of putting an animal in the back of that vehicle, transporting the individual, and then, do we have to look at the possibility of decontamination? Um, what happens if we haul somebody to, uh, Cherokee in that same vehicle later on, and there's a flea infestation or something? And I'm going out on a limb here, but, but the bottom line is, is we need to look at, at, I don't agree with the fact that we're going to take animals to them and drop them off. I understand the agreement they've made with the city and the police department, I don't agree with that, I, I think that's, uh, ill-prepared on their part, uh, the, the, the process and, and the judgment on their part is, is theirs, not ours. So, my concern is the fact that, um, the Rescue League has given the indication that they are unwilling to go to, uh, you know, thirty, forty-four Prairie Avenue, and if you live there, I'm sorry, I'm just picking an address, but the bottom line is, and pick up the animal. Now, I understand the burden it is for them, but, and I understand the way the contractual agreement is today, but I've been sheriff twenty-eight years here, and for years since I've been here, uh, the Rescue League has done that, has gone someplace and picked up the animals. Um, I'm not also saying that my staff hasn't on occasion taken an animal out there, sometimes it's, it's a, less of a headache to just get rid of the problem. Um, that's not been part of our authorization, nor is it part of our policy to do that, though. So, that, that portion of it is where my concern is. The dollars and cents portion, that's you guys, I mean, you know, you have to fit that in, and I respect that whole, wholeheartedly. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm glad that you bring up the à la carte, because, I mean, if we use them, I look back, we're five years, and I think we had eleven times was the max that I found in five years. So, i- if we use them eleven times, and it's X number of dollars, you know, that's probably going to be economically more feasible than what it is. The other thing about it is just simply this, um, I, my first concern is to the citizens, and that means those people, especially those who we might haul, that are mentally handicapped or, or mentally ill, or, or it's, you know, committed, or those individuals who, uh, who we house in, in the back of those vehicles, and I just don't want to incur the responsibility or the liability on the part of the county, in case something negative does happen based off an infestation or whatever. You know, if we haul somebody in the back, and they spit, or they urinate, or they do those things, we've got to clean it up, we have, we have a process to do that. You know it happens, we don't necessarily know if an infestation occurs, so that's the other problem with it. So, I, I, I think that needs to be thought through a little bit more, that's my big concern with, with us doing any of the transports.
Would it, would an option on any of us doing the transports with our officers entail, because a lot of our vehicles now are trucks, where we've got, could we have a, for lack of a better term, a collapsible container cage in the back, and?
It's possible, um, the, the pickups that we, we currently, uh, transport, um, if you open up the tonneau covers, they've got gear pretty much all the way in, and yet it's not right to the tonneau cover.
There's not much room.
There really isn't, I hate to say that, and, and, you know, you gain this much, probably, in the long run. I don't know that, it, it, ten degrees or five degrees, I'm really up, uh, to housing a dog in the back with a tonneau cover or top of them either, or a hundred degrees out, so I think we need to consider all that risk involved, too. And plus the fact, you know, let's get serious, um, I can remember when I look back at, at the cases I've been on, and it has been a few years, as far as where the Rescue League came out, you know, that they've got the loop, they've got different things, and frankly, I know that some of the personnel that have worked out there have been phenomenal, I, I can remember pit bulls that would chew anybody up, and, and I'm not picking on a breed, but I'm being realistic here, and I've had, I've saw, so, seen some of your staff walk up and just passify and hook them up and take them. So, I, 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 I don't like deputies, that's just not part of our deal, and I, and I don't like incurring the potential for liability if we are going to haul them around, and, and the responsibility, if you will.
Well, what hap- what happens, and I say the hours are, are Monday through Friday now, what happens if, if, if we do send him out to get a, and, and get an animal on Saturday afternoon at four-thirty? I mean, what's he, what's he supposed to do with it? I mean, I.
There's a drop-off location available that, um, like, right now, the, the city officers have access to get in by a code, and we would provide that to the Sheriff's Department also.
So, the city officers do haul them in their, their car?
Yes.
And then they take them out, and, so then, they got a, the city's got a dog in there, he brings another dog in there, or a cat, you're not putting it in the same box or?
Oh, no, there's several kennels in a room, uh, just specific for the drop-off location.
Part of the increase in the cost is also because we haven't raised our fees since two thousand nine, and so, it's acknowledging that it's been six years that we've been providing these services to the county with no increase at all.
Can I ask a quick question, please? Um, I, I went just and, and did a little search online, and I was checking some of the other counties and entities across the state who have community societies or, or rescue leagues and such. Um, a lot of them have huge, uh, numbers of, of private donations that seem to be sustaining for them. Um, as I recall, what, what's your budget running, is it, is?
About three hundred thousand.
I was gonna say about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand. Um, what, what kind of percentage of that, of your budget consists of those private donations and, and support numbers?
It, let me look here, donations were.
I'm not talking about fees, I'm talking about just donations, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, donations were a little over forty-three thousand, that was just That was just for like people just coming in, giving us donations. And then we put on a fundraiser. Those kind of things are whiskers and wine fundraiser, raised about fifty thousand.
So about ninety grand?
So, yeah. So not even a third of our, of our expenses.
I, I was amazed that some of the ones that I looked at were literally the other direction. There were two-thirds, uh, you know, donations and that. And I'm not saying that, you know, maybe our community is more blue collar and less apt to have the, the, the big millionaire types, you know, that, that can do that. But, but I was amazed at that. So I wasn't sure what type of really fundraising efforts you put out to go to the various organizations and, and also publicly to try to solicit from people who are animal lovers.
So you don't have a big endowment then?
No, I was just gonna add to, I'm sorry, we do like a year-end letter that we mail out to people. And that probably brings in about thirty thousand. I'm just looking at the, the number. So about thirty more than I previously said. So.
Well, I guess one direction we wanna, we wanna go here when we're, we're trying to take us to our, our next budget. Oh, we won't make a decision today. We're, we're gonna take our budget meeting and talk it over that way. It, it.
Well, one of the concerns I have is if there, you know, if you're not going to be available on a Saturday and a Sunday, we're back at the situation where if we do have an animal, Sheriff Comanches and/or his deputies have to transport to your shelter for the, the access code. So we're right back to, uh, you're literally asking for more services and more dollars for services, but providing less services and something that the sheriff does not want to get into as far as transporting animals.
I think, and tell me if I'm overstepping, but it's my understanding that in the past, there have been problems with homeowners who don't like the authority of the animal rescue league to come in and take their pet. If it's a dog that's causing problems or if there's something, you know, a dog that's loose and nobody's taking responsibility for it, but they, they get angry at the animal rescue league for coming and taking their animal. And so if the sheriff is involved or one of his deputies is involved, then there's that show of authority that it's okay, I'm allowed to take this animal. I'm allowed to take it away and you're gonna have to go to the rescue league and claim it there or you're gonna have to take action later. Whereas if it's just Shelley and it's the middle of the night.
Well, the, the steps and procedures that we have in place, uh, because we get the calls and we have to approve them sometimes at two o'clock in the morning.
Right.
If the comm center gets a call on an animal, the first question is, are you inside of an incorporated area? If that's a yes, then you don't need to be talking to one of the supervisors for approval. You need to go to that individual for the incorporated town or Sheriff Comanches has an agreement with that incorporated town, cause they're doing the patrol division there anyway. The second question is, is that animal contained? So if we do call you out, once you get from point A where you're at to point B to where the animal is at, that animal is literally there. It's not just turned to vapor. So if we get a, it's outside of an incorporated area, yes, the animal is contained. The next question is, do you know whose animal that is we are going to send you out? And many times, the officer may ask the individual that we're out and it's the neighbor's dog. They just don't want to call the neighbor to come and get it. Well, we certainly don't want you to have to go out and make a call, cause we've had this happen before, where we've called you to come get the animal. You pull up, the sheriff's off, deputies is there, and all of a sudden you're, you're pulling down the driveway with the animal in your van and the neighbor comes running across the street and says, hey, that's my dog. Well, you know, why didn't the individual call the neighbor and say, come get your dog? A lot of times it's an ongoing problem of the animal, but, you know, the officer has to deal with it. So we're in a lot of those situations, but if we get a yes to all of those answers, we're outside of an incorporated area, yes, the dog is contained, no, we don't know who it is, that's when we call you guys. So it's really at the point where that person that, where that animal is, is very glad you're showing up to get it. We still have law enforcement involved on that call out. Because we don't, we don't approve a call unless it does come through the comm center. So, you know, between the sheriffs and, and the supervisors, we do have very good procedures in place, you know.
So at that point though, excuse me Ted, at that point though, do they charge the homeowner across the street that?
Yes.
That they are, they are liable?
Yes, we would, yes.
If, if they, if they, if it gets to the point where they don't know who the animal is belonged to, then we're on the hook for, for paying it. And if they do know who the animal is belonged to, when they come and pick up the animal at the rescue league, they have to pay that fee.
Right.
And the county does not get billed.
Yeah, you don't double bill.
No, no. You would only be billed for the ones that go unclaimed, for those pickups.
When I talk to both of my patrol sergeants and, and my chief deputy on this, we have a number of times during the year where we get out there and they say, this is Tom's dog. You know, and just what you said.
Yeah, you call Tom.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just say, okay, and we'll run over to Tom, get him out of bed and say, your dog is over here to get this taken care of. Now, in, in rural America, if that farmer, and I'll just say a farmer, it's rural, feels threatened or that animal is threatening its livestock or, you know, there's a whole, that farmer can put that dog down legally. I mean, there's parameters for that. So Tom is more than willing to come out and get his pup at that point. He may not like that, but that's the way it goes. We actually have a lot of those situations that occur where we don't call you. The, 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 the problem that I see, I, we have in the past had situations where we maybe had one deputy out and then he or she ended up getting a call somewhere else. And I do know that we've been, where your people have arrived and, and we weren't there. And, and that's, that's a situation where I've gone to my staff since those issues developed and surely since the last meeting we had. And we've emphasized to them that at the very least, they should call you and say, hey, I've gotta go on another call. The comm center should call you and say, bless you. The comm center shouldn't say bless you to you unless you sneeze at work. But the comm center should call you and say, hey, the deputy had to leave. And then your personnel can make that decision what they want to do at that point. Because, you know, uh, life and safety are, are, are highest on our list. So, so we're still gonna occasionally have those issues occur. That's not our policy on that and we try. Now, I do know we had a couple of our incorporated communities who I believe use you, where we contact, our policy there pursuant to the contractual agreement with them is to notify the mayor or the town person and then that's their baby, then we leave.
Right.
So we won't be there in those situations.
Right, and that's fine.
We, we, you know, and that's what that consists of. And I, but I do know I've had complaints from, from your, your organization in the past that said, hey, we got to this community and nobody was there. Sorry, and, and I don't know what else to say about that. That's something you have to take it with them, cause they are your client in that case. The county's not a client in that case.
Correct.
So, so anyways, I'm just trying to lay all that out here on the table, just so it can be addressed and so it's a matter of record, I guess, is the big thing.
But my concern is getting back to the Saturday, Sunday thing. If you're not there and we have a dog issue and you as sheriff don't want your guys doing any transport, where are we at then?
Well, we're, we're gonna have to do is if, if, if we're forced to do that, cause we're still a public safety and service organization, I mean, I'm gonna be right up front with you. I don't want my people bit and dog bit, cause they won't get dog bit. That's just the way it is. And I mean, um, we've gone ahead and we've done some, uh, some training on video for, to deal with those issues in the past. But let's get serious, sometimes it doesn't happen. So we would outfit our staff with probably loops and, and like you said before, uh, you know, we may have to look at, David, we may have to look at some sort of carrier. And then of course, at that point it'd be a Great Dane or something. So how's that gonna fit? But the problem with this versus the city is the city is in a contained area where they can outfit a staff member or a vehicle and that vehicle can go to that dog call. That's not the case with us. We're twenty-four, seven. Everybody has their own vehicle. So if we bought three or four, you know, as good as I do, that would be the units that would be off duty that particular day. So there's gonna be a cost incurred if we're going to have to start hauling animals around. I mean, I don't know what that consists of, but I would venture to guess you're probably looking at a couple hundred bucks a person or a car minimum. So, so that's a concern that I would have if we had to do that where they couldn't respond. What, what I don't understand, and, and this is something that, that bothers me a little bit, is I don't understand why you as an organization can't say, this is your employee A or employee B or employee C's on call. And then they go out on that and when we would be there. And, and they get, they're getting paid for that. I mean, and hopefully the fee that you're charging us would offset whatever that cost would be for that to happen. I mean, I'm not saying, granted, it's, it's nice to, to work eight to four-thirty, but that just doesn't work in our world. And, and, and I would hope that you would, that for that half dozen times, it, that wouldn't be that great of a burden, I wouldn't think on your organization either. At least I would think so. They're, they're three or six, you know, days.
You do have someone on call all the time.
It's like what Ted says, we're here twenty-four, seven.
Yeah.
It's just like we have a department head here from IT. Yes, he's required to put in a certain amount of hours on, on a weekly basis. But at the same time, if we have an issue at two o'clock in the morning out to the jail, I'll guarantee you, our department head is on that at two o'clock in the morning. We can never tell when we're going to have an issue that we need you guys. That's why this is really presenting a problem for us, where you saying, okay, Saturday, Sunday, we're not gonna be there for you.
I understand what you're saying. And in the past, that's exactly what we've done. We've had staff on call twenty-four hours a day. Generally, that's been Shelley.
Yes, for the most part.
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. That means she can do nothing, go nowhere. Now that she's the director, I don't know if she has somebody else on that job or not. But it's not a large enough organization that we can spread it out. And I understand you have three of you and so one of you three are always on call. She is the only one, so she's always on call. Part of the reason that this whole discussion started and that we were trying to rearrange our contracts with both the towns and the county is because we realized that this is what we've always been doing, but that doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. In order for Shelley or whoever the person on call is to be properly, I guess, prepared for these kinds of calls in the middle of the night, we need to have a much better vehicle. We need to have updated equipment to collect the animals. We need to have somebody that's actually trained and certified as an animal warden, and that costs a lot of money. And so we were looking at our contract and saying, hey, do we want to come up to code? Do we want to have all of these things? Excuse me. And try to make it a top-notch opportunity here for the county and the city? Or do we want to try to save people money and say, well, maybe if law enforcement's willing to help out, since they're gonna be at the call, then if they could transport, then we could save everybody some money. So we weren't doing this because we were saying we want to work less. We were trying to find a way to save some money for the county and for the cities by not paying the extra money, incurring the extra expenses to go out buying a vehicle and have this expensive training.
Okay, if I could just address that. And, and I know that you guys give great care to animals and you love animals and, and I do. And I've got a cat that drives me nuts sometimes, you know. But the reality of it is, is my people aren't certified to do those things. My vehicles aren't set up for that. My equipment isn't such. And now all of a sudden, we're forcing the animal to go ahead and be handled by somebody who isn't trained to the level that you're saying that you would have to train somebody to. And I mean, is that really any different? In your case, you train one or two. In my case, I train twenty-one, because they're all on different shifts. So, so I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing your, your problem and I'm feeling your pain on that. But the same token, I don't know that it's any less of a problem for us. You, you understand where I'm coming from?
If you'd like to pay us more, we'd be glad.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's theirs. But you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
And, and so the exact same reason that you don't want to do it, except, except I have to add, I have to add into it the human aspect, the people I haul and the concerns of allergies and all those things. So, so I don't know.
I, I guess.
You have broad shoulders over there, you three guys.
I guess, I guess my feeling is, and I, and we're just, there again, we're just talking, cause there's, there's no decision. But I have a hard time, I mean, I, first of all, I, 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 if we call and you guys go out, I've got no problem paying, you know, two hundred fifty dollars per call, we'll just say. But I, I have a hard time with the ten thousand dollars. Because, you know, there again, our revenue comes off of taxpayers. A lot of us, you know, buy feed or something, food and stuff for the, for out, for the animals out there. It's hard for me, and, and, but what it looks like to me is, we're given a, a donation of ten thousand dollars plus we're paying for them to call or to be called and so, that's where I see it, you know. And correct me, Shelley, I know your eyes roll.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't like it to be called a donation. It is a payment for services.
It's a contribution, it's a contribution.
Not a payment for services when we're contracted or providing a service.
But then we also pay to pack it up, you know.
I guess I would ask, what would you do with stray animals that you found if we weren't able to take them? What would happen to them? That's what, that we're there for is to keep them safe and care for them and find them new homes if someone doesn't show up. So that's what the ten thousand is for, is to exist and, and be there for all the animals to, to come in without questions asked on that part.
I understand that. You know, I'm in favor of the rescue league and I like just how it works. And I'm just also trying to, you know, be accountable for taxpayer dollars. Also, even though we're looking at ten thousand dollars in the scheme of things, but.
Bill, you're remarkably quiet.
Uh, I understand what you're saying when it comes to, uh, people that just bring things in. How, how many, how many dogs and cats do we, do we have just brought in, do you think?
For the, just the county, you mean, or just all?
Do you, do you keep track of where they come from?
Yes, we do.
Incorporated and unincorporated areas?
Yep, yep, we do. So, um, for the Marshall County, we did a, from July one of fourteen to June thirtieth of fifteen, when we were preparing for the last meeting, there were a hundred and eighty-one stray animals that came in from Marshall County. Those were the ones that were not claimed by an owner.
Now, is that Marshall Town also?
No.
Just outside of the incorporated area?
Yes, yes, correct.
How about your other, uh, communities? Can you go right down the line on the incorporated ones also?
I don't have that listed, no.
But so the one eighty-one?
I've got Marshall Town, I've got the city of Marshall Town. They had, um, there was three hundred and seventeen strays and we picked up a hundred and seventy-one of those. Let's see, so fifty-four were returned to owners. So a total of four hundred and thirty-four animals in the city of Marshall Town were not claimed in that league.
What, what kind of money were they paying you at that time?
Their contract is, okay, that was forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents during that timeframe.
And you did a hundred and seventy-one pickups? And then do you charge the city per pickup also on top of their fee?
At that time, if it was during business hours, no. After hours, yes.
You had a total, how many strays in that city of Marshall Town?
Three hundred and seventeen in a year's time.
That's just the animals that were brought in by the public.
I'm sorry, yeah.
But those are the ones that you, you ended up keeping though. That would equate to the hundred or whatever you said for us before.
No, four hundred and thirty-four were kept.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So the, the county, the county part, we're, we're responsible for it. We had somewhere between four and five that were picked up that were vicious. Something like, and then we, then you had about a hundred and eighty-one animals that were brought in by people and, and left because they couldn't take care of them or what, whatever.
No, they were just stray animals that, that were found. Honestly, um, you know, for the most part, people don't, when people surrender their animals, they are honest about it because they love their animal. I don't know if that's where you're going with that. They do want what's best for it. We can usually tell when someone is lying to us. It's, you know, sometimes they leave their baby's tags on and don't even, you know, so, so we do catch them. Of course, there's always gonna be somebody in every situation that, that abuses, you know, the, the system. But for the most part, um, I do believe they are just stray animals. In other words, not owned by the person bringing them in, that, that do come in from the county.
You know, when, when you're talking of no increases since two thousand nine, why? Why haven't, why haven't we increased?
I guess it just hasn't been approached, right?
You know, as a board member, uh, you know, you're always looking for ways to make revenue. I mean, you know, may, maybe is that something to look at? Or are, is that, is that promoting more drop-offs and notes? You know, and you just, I'm not gonna pay that much money to take my animal in or something. I, I don't know. I mean, it is, it's kinda.
I doubt that the people who lie about dropping off their own animal claiming it's a stray are paying attention to what the board is doing and whether the county is paying. I think they just think it comes out of our pocket.
Yeah.
Well, do we, when they ask for questions, we're gonna go into the, the budget.
No, leave the questions.
Sure?
No, I just, just the simple math of it indicates that, um, you know, that the, the, the city had so many more animals at a, at their rate. If you divide that into it, it's about three or four times more per animal, is what it is versus what our rate is. So, um, and that was, that was those numbers at forty-some thousand, that was the old contract with them, right?
Correct.
Yeah. What, what is the current contract with them? Just roughly.
I don't know if that's, um, they are. And those are not, that's not even correct, no. And those are not, that's not even correct, no.
Is it considerably more than the forty-three?
I, um, let's see. I think it's about forty-eight right now.
So they did increase, you're saying, didn't they?
Yes, they did increase, yes. See, it's, it increased to like forty-eight thousand and then they are using our, um,
The drop.
Drop-off facility. But in emergency situations, we still do respond to them. So we still are on call twenty-four seven right now.
You probably do considerably more calls to the city than you would do for us then too.
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, a hundred, a hundred and seventy-one pickups to the cities.
Right.
As opposed to us with four to five.
Right.
Well, we'll, we'll take this to our committee, our budget committee.
Okay.
And then, uh, do we, at that time, when we come up with a decision that we wanna either accept or counter, make a counter? Do we?
We'll have to chat this over and come back to it and revisit it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You bet. That gave us some more clarification on some of the questions we had and we sure appreciate it.
Alright, thank you guys very much. Uh, just kind of a note before we go to the public forum, the courthouse will be closed. Janet, you might want to write this down. Courthouse will be closed Thursday, December twenty-fourth. Friday, December twenty-fifth, we'll open at one. No, no, Friday, December twenty-fifth, we'll be closed all day. And Friday, January one, twenty sixteen, due to the Christmas and New Year's holiday, will also be closed that day. All offices in Marshall County courthouse will be closed.
If I can make a quick, also addition to that for the sheriff's office. The twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, will be closed out there for administrative business.
Alright, moving on now to public forum. This is time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Well, I will say, offer a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas to everybody. And, uh, cause our next regular session is December twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Wednesday, December twenty-third, twenty fifteen, at one PM. Due to the Christmas holiday, due to the, due to the time constraint for the following being held on Monday, January fourth, twenty sixteen, at nine AM. This is kind of a long. All business to be acted upon at that session shall be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, December thirty-first, twenty fifteen, at one PM. There be no further business to come before the board. We are adjourned at ten.
We have to go to our official clock?
Ten, fourteen.
Fourteen.